We're gonna get started now since it's so quiet in the room. I want to order the Centerville Board of Education meeting for Monday, April 23rd, 2018. Roll call please.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Annie Self.
Here.
Mr. Schreier.
Here.
Megan Sparks.
Here.
And Dr. Rohr.
Here. Please stand up and pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for approval of the agenda.
Please.
Call their roll please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self. Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, the reason you're all there, honors.
Thank you, Dr. Rohr. We're going to go ahead and start with honoring all of our Destination Imagination teams. And I'd like to call up Mr. Warren Gordon. I don't know if Dee, your wife, wants to come up with you or not, but they're our coordinators of our DI program here in the district. No, Dee's gonna stay in the back, which is fine. So, Warren, if you'd come up and make some introductory comments and then introduce the coaches for each of the teams, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. First of all, thank you. Centerville DI has once again had an incredible year. A lot of people have worked throughout the year to make our DI program the envy of many around the world. None of this would be possible without the support we received from Centerville City School District. Our success in this program is due to effort and cooperation on many levels. And all of the Centerville DI would like to thank Dr. Henderson and the school board, Kathy Spearu, and central office administrators. Thank you. As well as the building principals and building coordinators for the marvelous work our program receives, so thank you. This year, Centerville DI sponsored 37 teams consisting of students from every grade. Each of those teams worked under the guidelines of team managers who just dedicated an extreme amount of time to helping the kids grow, experiment, and learn countless new things. The time, effort, and attention they give to the kids each year is outstanding. We couldn't do any of this without you, so thank you. Out of the 37 teams, Centerville was honored to send eight of them to the Ohio State Tournament, which was held Saturday, March 23rd, in Mount Vernon, Ohio. Each of the eight teams represented Centerville incredibly well, and I am proud to introduce them tonight. First, we have War Torres and Jose, who's not here today. Okay. From Centerville High School, they took first place at regional and state tournament in the technical challenge Maze Craze. They will be moving on to global finals at the end of May.
Warren, if you could come up and introduce your team? You want to say something to them?
Hi, everyone. First and foremost, I want to thank the board for always supporting us and for being such a big help and support for all of these creative kids. I have been honored to be the team manager for many years for many of them, since they were in third grade and they're still on our team. I have watched them grow as, from children on to, from children on to fine young men and women who are now very active in the school system as well as our city and doing so many different wonderful things. I get the pleasure to work with them, see how creative they are, watch them, give them the environment to make mistakes, because from there, they have produced so many more things that they never thought they would start out doing. We, this is our first time doing the technical challenge. Usually, we do the structural, the science, and the fine arts. This challenge, they had to create a, something that went through a maze, which ultimately was a robot. First, they started with the car, then moved on to creating different things, and I can't wait to see what they do at globals. They also had to create a transformation thing that had to transform. They created a tree that grew in front of your eyes using many different motors. And the last thing they had to do was get a gadget to move something out of a maze, and they created it out of syringes and hydraulics. So, I am proud to present every member on my team. Two of them are not here. I just came back from a lacrosse game, and they're busy trying to win as well. So, that's my two daughters. So, this is Josephine Durst. Please come in up. Thank you, Josephine, for being on the team. Part of the powerbomb, and band, and so many other activities. Thank you, Josephine. Congratulations. Next, I want to thank Stephanie. Please come up. Thank you, Stephanie Rohr, for being a good team member and being an other and singing. I'm sorry, I have so many activities, I might miss some of them. Gargi, please come up. Gargi also has numerous activities. I'm afraid I'm gonna miss a couple, so thank you for being on the team. Cory is our first team, first time on our team, and we are so pleased with her and been great for our team. Thank you, Cory. Last, the hobbies are only Bill and the Team Jack. Debate, other, other activities. Thank you again for having us and supporting our team. I should also name my daughter Abigail Torres and Veronica Torres, and my husband, who is my right hand. Whenever he's not at work, he's at home doing DI with us.
Next, we have Warren Wadusimbi. Chair, thank you. And Doug Trausti from John Hole Elementary. They received a first-place trophy at regional tournament in the scientific challenge Unlikely Attractions. Would you two please come up and introduce your team and talk a little bit about the team?
So, for the record, it is Wadusimbi. I push people up, it really explains it. So, Doug and I started coaching four of these girls in second grade. They are now third, one third grader and six fourth graders, and it was a great year. They did the scientific challenge where they had to use three scientific principles. They came up with magnetism, optical illusion.
Electrism.
Electrism. So, I think we'll just, it was, you know, it's a great, great program and the support from Doug Baill, our building manager, and of course, the board has been great.
Yeah, real briefly, you know, I just want to express our gratitude to the school board for hiring us and firing us every year. So, I haven't done the calculations, but in the STUR system, I figure I have to work until about 115 to retire. So, thank you. We do appreciate it.
So, our girls in the alphabet board, Brooklyn Asher. Harley Berkel. Julia Dolski. She's our third grader. Pixie. Pixie Edson. Emma Reed. Lucy Schrems. And Sarah Wadusimbi.
Thank you, guys. Next is the Centerville Middle School team consisting of students from both Magdwick and Tower Heights. The team is managed by Sheila Camillus and Jennifer Schwabbi. All right. They also competed in the scientific challenge Unlikely Attractions. They placed first at regional tournament and will be moving on to global finals here in May.
This team was just really an experience to work with. We had everything from kids who had never done DI other than rising stars, and then we've had experienced global participants. So, we had a wide variety, and I guess it was kind of interesting. We knew early on we had a team of comedians, and when they decided they wanted to do a scientific challenge and not really want to measure and calculate, we knew we were in for a wild ride. And as an unlikely attraction, I think we had the wildest drive.
They created their final project involved creating a water wheel, a water-powered Ferris wheel, which worms rode around, so it was entertaining in the jungle where you never expected Ferris wheels. So, anyway, it was a pretty entertaining experience.
But it just worked.
We have Tito Garcia, my son, he's in eighth grade. And next, Thomas Garcia, who's in sixth grade. Ethan Hazen in seventh grade from Magdwick also. Jackson Hazen in seventh grade from Magdwick also. Jayden Parmenter in seventh grade from Magdwick also. Kate Roche in eighth grade at Tower Heights. And Katie Schwabbi in eighth grade at Tower Heights also.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we have a team from Centerville High School managed by myself and my wife Dee Gordon. This team also competed in the scientific challenge Unlikely Attractions. They have put together a really amazing solution to the challenge this year. Their skit has everything from creepy skeletons to a flying peak pegasus. They placed first at both regional tournament, state tournament, and their outstanding performance, and they will advance to global finals for one last time. The entire team is all seniors, and they'll be graduating not only from Centerville High School this spring, but also from the DI program as well. Many of these kids have been doing DI since second or third grade, and this team here today has been together for the past three years. My wife and I have been their managers for the past six years, and it has been our great pleasure to spend time with these kids, and we will miss them. They're off to great things, and I know all their skills they've learned and friendships they have made from DI will stay with them for a lifetime. I'm honored to introduce the graduating seniors. Preety Balashanjan.
Thanks for putting me on the spot. Something I learned from DI was how to actually work as a team. When I started, I was, I know it's cheating, but when I started in second grade, I was a real brat. We didn't have any friends, because she didn't know how to work with others. And after meeting other brats, it's been a really great time, and I would have traded for a new girl.
Doc Woodhurst.
I learned a lot of stuff about acting and working as a team. And yeah, it's been a really fun experience, I'm gonna miss it, but, you know, had fun.
Rebecca Gruber.
I have learned a lot of things, such as tools and how to use this.
I'll be honest with you, she did learn how to use tools safely too.
Plenty happened.
So, Rebecca took mine, so I don't really know what else I learned. I'm gonna say I learned how to use my creativity to solve problems.
All right, so one thing I learned from DI is probably how to use recycled materials into like something that is like out of this world. For example, like a pegasus made out of newspaper, which is what we did. So, I thought that was pretty cool, and I learned how to do it. So, if I ever have to use it in the future.
All right, so I would say what I've learned, basically creative problem solving, teamwork, leadership. And I also just want to say thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Gee. They've been doing this for more than, you know, we've been doing this, longer than my brother and I have, when we started in second grade, so just want to say thanks to them.
Patrick Oxway.
So, I've done DI for doing it a while, ten years now. And probably the greatest skill I've learned from it is just the art of perseverance. Sometimes you just run forwards thinking where you're going, then you smack face first into that brick wall, you're giving the same problem. And the easiest way to get around that is just by creatively thinking how we get around it, except maybe trying to go through it. You go under it or above it. Sometimes you have to use people with you to help you surpass your goal and meet others' expectations. And I think that just working as a team with all these people has taught me these skills, and it is, has been truly wonderful being with all of them.
Moving on to the fine arts challenge, change the tune, we have Doug and Tina Hoppselman, team from Centerville High School. This team will also be representing Centerville at global finals. I just want to say something about this, this team manager here, she's been with me since the beginning, because her son started when I started, so her oldest son. So, Katie, come up here and introduce your team.
As Lauren said, we're kind of been, have been in DI for 18 years. And either as his DI team parents, or now his coaches of this wonderful team over here. And these great kids have all decided that they wanted to do the fine arts challenge. They had to figure out how to write a musical, and none of them know how to write music. They, the boys on the end had to figure out how to dance, and believe me, they're not dancers. That was fun. So, a lot of, the thing I've seen about DI is it really helps kids go beyond their comfort zone and do things they never thought they would do before, because there is one rule in DI, and it is, if it doesn't say you can't, then you can. So, it's not always a rule that you want to apply everywhere in life, but in DI, it is how you determine what you can and can't do. So, here is our team. Isabel.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a team from Weller Elementary that competed in the engineering challenge, drop zone. This team placed first at regional tournament. They are managed by Chip and Dragon and Fluffy.
So, I would like to say thank you to the board and to Principal of Weller and staff at Weller who have been just awesome in support of DI and our efforts here. It's not a, an understatement to say that we would not have gone as far as we did and done what we did without that support. So, we really do appreciate it. Our team did the engineering challenge called drop zone, and in this, they had to build a structure that was as light as possible. It had to be less than 150 grams. Excuse me, 175. And then they had to drop weights on it, five and 10-pound weights from a height of more than a foot. And the initial structure they made was remarkable. It held all of the weight. They also had to put together a story that included a sudden dramatic event that had to be initiated by a technical method. And they came up with a cookie planet where an evil businessman was coming to try to take it over, and they successfully fought him off. Their sudden dramatic event was a transition to the boxing planet. And I'm really, really proud of the team in particular because they were having trouble with their, their technical method to initiate their dramatic event. And about two weeks before the regional tournament, they scrapped what they had originally been doing, and they just came up with something completely different. And they pulled it off and did a, did a really wonderful job, and I'm just really proud of them. So, uh... So, I will introduce the team now. Avery Claplin is my son. Voodoo Ramaduja. And then, Lita Senna Barak. And I would also, yes, I'd also like to acknowledge those team members who were unable to be here tonight. Connor Aberzinski, Kalen Byrd, Tanisha Sarwall, and Trayvon Vermont.
Thank you. Also from Weller Elementary is a team of fifth graders who competed in service learning challenge Inside Impact. Their managers are Harry and Michelle Oxwriter. This team placed first at regional tournament and will be advancing to global competition for the first time. I'd like to say a thank you to both the Oxwriters. My team, for the past six years plus maybe, has been meeting at their house and meeting with this team at the same time in one room when we're meeting in another room. So, imagine fourteen kids in one house trying to do two different projects at the same time. So, they've had patience like saints. So, Michelle, please come on up here and introduce your team.
Hi, I'm Michelle Oxwriter, and my husband, Harry, is the tall man in the middle taking pictures. As said earlier, I'm gonna do the public speaking, because behind every strong woman is a man who loads and drives the prop trailer. I'm pleased to pronounce, to present the Tree Tribe from Weller Elementary, and they will be competing to make world finals in Service Learning Challenge. This is what we call a two-for-challenge, because not only do the kids have to create their challenge solution, they also have to do a community service project in that same timeframe. Inspired by the Lorax, in their fifth-grade biome project, they partnered with the Centerville Washington Township Park District to replace trees that have been lost in our community parks due to the Emerald Ash War invasion. With the goal of purchase 10 trees and the support, overwhelming support, might I add, of Mr. Bokey and the staff at Weller Elementary and the community, they were able to purchase 17 trees. Seven of those, they went out in the cold and rain on President's Day to plant themselves. Now, if you want to see what we call DI dedication, imagine a 10-year-old girl hefting a sledgehammer that weighs more than her to pound a tree stake in. So, the interest and enthusiasm for their project have also earned them a mention in the park district's summaries letter. So, if you have received it today, check out the commissioner's corner. And the CWPD actually plans to present their project as a state park competition later in the fall. Now, as I mentioned, this is a two-for-challenge. So, on top of county points and planting trees, the kids created a cach device, a C-A-C-H-E, and it had to contain all of their props, their costumes, their infographics, everything. They could roll it out on the stage, and anything they needed to do their eight-minute presentation, they then had to get out of the cach and dress themselves and go through their presentation. With the medieval-themed skit of the battle between the Tree Tribe and the Emerald Ash War, the kids built a five-foot-tall by six-foot-long by three-foot-wide castle, or as they called it, a cashel. And that won a Renaissance Award in competition for its many closets, opening sides and interior, drawbridge, and a built-in interactive puppet. On behalf of the other members of our team members, I'm pleased to introduce Sophia Balloli. Pradeep Mandasa. Ryan Oxwriter. Gabriel Reacher. And last, but never least, Samaria Williams.
Harry, you want to come and get a picture?
Okay.
Come on, just be saying, pretend like you're gonna spend the next month in Denver, still.
You will. Congratulations. Last but not least, is another combined Centerville Middle School team managed by Ken Nosmacher and Lawrence Chavica that also competed in the Service Learning Challenge in Inside Impact. They came in first place at regional tournament and will also be competing at global competition.
Again, very much. We also did a service learning project, and as you've just heard, all the details and explanation of how that particular challenge worked, it's a two-part challenge, and it's really, to me, it's very difficult. All of these are very difficult. But our team did a service project. They ended up learning how to knit hats for little preemie babies, and they ended up collecting and making 150 knitted hats for the Miami Belle Knit Q. So, they're very excited about that project. And then, of course, they had to turn all of that into a skit with the cash storage devices you just heard. And so, they came up with these really fun craft costumes that are knitted hats on the back, and I'm just very proud of all this team. There are seven of them. Two of them cannot make it, and Mrs. Chavica could not be here either. So, we have five of our team members, and we'll go ahead and introduce them. We have Emma Hupner. Francesca Irwin is not here today. Emma Nosmacher. Lauren Nosmacher. Lauren Nosmacher. Josh Nelson is also not here today. We have Perdi Raju. And last, very last, but not least, Aina Lim Chavica.
I know I talked about thirty-seven teams and eight teams here presented tonight. Now, those other team managers that did their team, worked with their teams and solved the solution, you know, they're very dedicated and as well are very proud of their teams. And we're very happy that they did it. We'd like to, you know, continue having these team managers come back. So as far as the administration goes and to the parents out there watching this and seeing it tonight, we'd like to just invite everybody to new DI. I think it's a great program. And we'd like to thank everybody so much for what they've done and all the amazing teams and team managers that were recognized tonight. And thank you.
I'd just like to again thank Warren and Dee Gordon for their leadership for coordinating all of the DI teams in the program. They spend countless hours supporting all of the teams. Team managers, thank you. We know the time that you put in, and of course, students, great job. Best of luck to all of you going on to a global competition. Parents, thank you for sharing your children with us as well. We're going to change gears just a little bit now, and the next honor will be, we'd like to present to you a very special young lady from Tower Heights Middle School. And I'd like to have English Language Arts teacher, Mrs. Christian Rash, come up to the podium to make a few comments about this special young lady.
Good evening, everybody. It is an honor to recognize Miss Madeline Thomas, who will be heading to the National Spelling Bee at the end of May. It has been a privilege to teach and to know Madeline for the past two-plus years, almost three years. She is a diligent learner. She's always seeking ways to learn more and challenge herself, both in and out of the classroom. Madeline loves words. It is evident in what she chooses to read and also in her wonderful written work. She's got a wonderful writing style, advanced beyond her years for sure. It is evident when you talk to Madeline that she is brimming with innate talent. But she is also tireless in her work ethic. That is what is especially impressive to me about Madeline. She works incredibly hard. She's always seeking ways to make her work better and stronger. I know that there has been and will continue to be much preparation involved in the Spelling Bee, or getting to the Spelling Bee in May. Madeline, please know that your teachers and your classmates and your parents and your principal are going to be super proud of you. We already are super proud of you, whatever the outcome is. We know that we will all be rooting for you and that you will give this task no less than trust. So congratulations to you. We are super excited for you.
And I just wanted to give a shout out to Mrs. Lynn Bartlett. Mrs. Bartlett is also a Language Arts teacher at Tower Heights and really kind of heads up the Spelling Bee program. So thank you for your efforts there. Madeline, congratulations again. Not only is Tower Heights proud of you, but we are all proud of you as well. So congratulations. Next, we're going to move on to some of the winter sports teams and athletes and coaches. And we're going to bring up the bowling teams first. And I'd like to have the head boys coach of the bowling team, James Parker, come up and make some introductions. Andy Parker, also known as Andy. And have him make some presentations to his athletes.
Thank you for allowing us to talk a little bit about our season. We're, last year, I was fortunate enough to stand here before you, and I made kind of a bold prediction that my team was kind of dreading it. But I told them we'd have a better season than we did last year. Last year, we finished seven and five, tied for first in the G-Walk. We finished fourth in the state. This year, I'm proud to say, we went 11-1. We won the National League East Division. We won four titles, and one of those being the Sectionals. And it was kind of funny, after the tournament, the reporter asks, "Hey, haven't you guys won this before?" And I hadn't really looked at it, and it was our fourth year in a row winning Sectionals. So that was pretty tough to do. And then, if you look at our overall in our tournaments, we had three second-place finishes, three third, one fourth, four fifth, and one sixth. Considering every one of our tournaments, there's at least eighteen to twenty teams at it. I was very proud of the boys. We had a great, great season. Hate to tell you this, guys, I expect a better season next year, just so you know. I still want that state title. Like to bring up the players. Erin Hinderhan. Dylan Dobrin. Junior Mason Utley. And our super freshman Ian Dobrin. Two of the seniors that couldn't be with us tonight, Justin Bartholomew and Kyle Boyer. And then Wally Jaber and Max Borniven. Oh, I'm not saying his real name. I'll butcher it, sorry. It's Elahheed Albert, I think. He says I always mess it up, so I don't even try anymore. But it's Wally. I'm not sure where he's at tonight. He would have given us his tech support lingo, so it's kind of funny to watch him. But anyhow, those are the gentlemen that were here. And I'd also like to introduce Nicole Miseso, who Nicole, it's her first year as a JV coach. She went to Centerville High School, and she also had a full ride to go to Vanderbilt, competed for Vanderbilt. So, and we have one of our players will be going there this year. So, good news. So, team, next year, again.
Congratulations. And next, our head girls' coach, Eric Edmondson, make some introductions.
All right, once again, I'd like to thank the board and Centerville High School for all their support they gave us throughout the season. The girls' team finished up 11-1 in G-Walk this year, won G-Walk. We had numerous first place. I think we had four. And we broke a five-year jinx for state. Instead of finishing fifth, we finished third this year. So good things are happening. Hopefully, we can move that a little better next year. Unfortunately, a lot of my girls couldn't show up tonight. I have one freshman here, Kaylee Sykes. She's been a tremendous athlete this year, started out, had a great season. Once again, thank you.
Congratulations. And next, we're going to move on to the cheerleading comp squad. And I'd like to call up head coach Rick Bottles.
Well, we've had a great season. We had a little bit of a rebuilding year this year. We lost eight seniors last year. And this year, I had twenty-two girls, and sixteen of them were freshmen or sophomores. So it was a young team this year. So next year, we should be really strong. And we went to state and got second. And last year, we won the state title. And I've always heard it's hard to win a title, but it's hard to, it's even harder to defend the title. So we were close, though. But we got second, and we got second in nationals this year too. So hopefully, we'll get some young talent coming in and even stronger and win that title again next year. We'll start with Ellie Abraham. Ellie Vielen. Katie Payton. Olivia DeCascare. Amanda Di Petriello. Beth Behan. Heidi Moore. Alex Alar. Hannah Murray. Nancy Luke. Robbie Page. June Pat. Chloe Riley. Ellie Steback. Addison Starbuck. Maddie Welsh. Laura Welsh. And Melanie Zell.
This is head coach, Coach Steve Hippemeyer, for diving and swimming here. Okay, next, also like to give an opportunity for head wrestling coach, Alan Baird. Presentation. Okay, well, I think at this point, we're going to take a short break. And again, you're all welcome to stay for the entire meeting. But if you'd like to exit gracefully, you can do so now. Thank you.
Ready to restart the meeting, please? Next, Board of Education reports, legislative report, Mrs. Sparks.
All right, this month, we're going to talk about the amended substitute House Bill of 2042. This bill was designed to eliminate August special elections for levies with a lifespan of more than five years as well as change Ohio law relating to levy ballot language. Before this bill was passed last week, the committee accepted an amendment that removes provisions in the bill to eliminate August special elections. House bills that have passed that are going to the section now are House Bill 378. This bill creates Ohio Broadband Development Grant Program, which appropriates $100 million for the program. School districts are eligible to apply for this grant. House Bill 360, this bill prescribes suspensions and expulsions policies for incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. House Bill 318, this bill was discussed last month. It prescribes qualifications and training requirements for school resource officers. There will be a $10 million in grant money given to the school districts for their safety programs and training. Senate bills that have passed and are going onto the House is House Bill 82, as we discussed last month. This bill requires public schools to notify parents of a student who is absent without an excuse within two hours of being late to this morning. And that's the end of the report.
Thank you very much. Next, Board Rep Reports. Team reps. And their friends.
Okay, hi, guys. We'd like to share one of our latest efforts with the board and the public. So last month, we noticed that students were becoming more interested in mental health awareness and the aftermath of the March 14th walkout. So in order to better respond to these concerns for the students, we began to meet with Mr. Carroll. And we met with two other kids or brought them along, Matthew Hall and Nassan Sosari, because they were really active and participating in the March 14th walkout.
Okay, so I remember that on Friday, I actually wasn't there because I was giving blood. But I will say, I read through the comments, and a lot of people had a lot to say about like opening up more resources for mental health. And also, I recently read that the National Association of Social Workers said that you should have one school social worker for 250 students. So that's just something to keep in mind.
So what we essentially did was, we organized an event, and we sort of expanded candy and comments to receive insightful feedback and comments from students concerning mental health and safety. So we essentially set up a table, gave students hotlines and little green ribbons to like symbolize like mental health awareness, and we sort of spread awareness.
The event was much more successful than we expected. We set up the table back at Central at lunch, and many students came by, received candy because it was candy and comments. And then we passed out green ribbons, like Nassan said. And we noticed that many students, I mean, took some hesitation to write down how they felt about it. But after they got past the initial roadblock, they had lots of valuable things to say about our school.
In conclusion, we ended up getting 56 different comment sheets from kids. And going through the comments, we heard a lot about counselors and that students wanted more resources, and we got a lot of good feedback. And we're excited to return answers to all of the students, back to their advisories. And we'd like to thank Mr. Carroll for his support in organizing the event and letting us share these resources and the school hotline and different things with students. Thank you.
Thanks. Next is hearing of the public. This is a time where if anyone would like to come to the lectern and state their name, address, limit the comments to three minutes. If you have anything to say tonight, please come forward. Seeing the usual rush of comments, we will go on to the next part. Treasurers' Reports.
Good evening. This is the Treasurers' Report for April 23rd, 2018. In this presentation, I have two slides about revenue and three slides about expenses. General fund revenue from all sources is exceeding my estimate for this year. With this increased revenue, it now appears we could have a balanced budget, even with the $2.8 million spent for the recent purchase of land beside the high school. With the chart on the next slide, I will share one of the main reasons why it is now possible to have a balanced budget this year. I have received this year's final real estate settlement sheet from the county auditor. And even though the final payment has not been received yet, we now know our collection will be $2.8 million more than last year. This total is $2.1 million more than the 1% increase that was originally anticipated this year. It is important to note, however, I have been informed by the county auditor's office that many residents have paid their property taxes early this year because of the income tax laws that are changing for next year's tax reporting. New construction and overall property value increases from sales this year also appear to be better than expected in my original forecast. I would have to take this tax value and growth and one-time early property tax payments bump in consideration when determining. bump in consideration when determining what the collection estimate should be for the next, for the next school year. It is very possible that our real estate tax collection could go down next year because of the significance of the one-time bump of residents paying their taxes early this year. The board does need to approve a revised forecast next month and again before October 1st next school year. I will continue discussion with the county auditor for additional assistance in determining the real estate tax revenue estimate for both of these forecasts moving forward. General fund expenses are higher than last year at this time as expected. The salaries and benefits categories are staying very close to the budget with three months remaining until the end of the fiscal year. This chart shows the actual monthly payroll expenses and the estimated months still remaining for April, May, and June. You can see that the payroll expenses are tracking very close to the projected budget. This chart shows the actual monthly benefits expenses and the estimated months still remaining for April, May, and June. You can see that the benefits expenses are also still tracking very close to the budget. This is not on the chart, but I would like to add that expenses for services, supplies, and equipment are staying below the budget. And we are working to curb these expenses for the remainder of the year to help balance the budget this school year. This concludes my report this evening unless there are any further questions from the board.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have a vote on the treasurer's recommendations. Consider approving the March 2018 financial statements listed below. Monthly financial report, fund activity report, appropriations report, general funding spending report, general fund summary, general fund summary comparison, POs included in statement number seven, approved by administration then and now, certified by the treasurer and supported by the board resolution, totaling Hold on. Second. Hold the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings. March 19th and April 16th, 2018. Second. Hold the roll.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, superintendent's recommendations. Superintendent recommends accepting the resignations listed on Schedule A, recommends the employment, change of employment status, or change of contract status for the certificate persons listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given, recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff persons listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given, recommends the employment of persons listed on Schedules D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extrajudy assignments, and recommends the granting of leave of absence for the persons listed on Schedule E for the reasons and on the dates given. So move. Second. Hold the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, consider approving a resolution opposing House Bill 512, which I was, how about if you just explained briefly instead of reading?
Absolutely. There is current legislation right now where the House is considering changing, making some big changes with the Ohio Department of Education. Basically, they're talking about consolidating the duties and responsibilities of the Ohio Department of Education with the Ohio Department of Higher Education and the Governor's Office of Workforce Transformation into a new agency called the Department of Learning and Achievement. We all worry as educators in the state of Ohio that this is going to totally dismantle and take away all the jobs and responsibilities of the Ohio Department of Education. And so tonight, our Board of Education, like many boards across the state of Ohio, are going to pass a resolution opposing House Bill 512. And then we are going to send information to our legislators and ask them to reconsider this pending legislation. Sarah Swan, our community relations person, will be sending out a press release and there will be information there with all the contact information for Representatives Neera Jatani and Jim Butler and Senator Katie Lainer as well. So that's kind of the short explanation that the design is to dismantle the Ohio Department of Education. And like I said, this Board of Education and many boards of education are opposing this and think this is the wrong thing for education in the state of Ohio.
Thank you. Hold on. Second. Hold the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, consider authorizing continued membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2018, 2019 school year. So move. Second. Hold the roll.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, consider approving May 7th to 11th, 2018, as National Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, a time to publicly recognize our staff's contributions to the development of this community and the tremendous influence on the lives of our students. So move.
Second.
As I say every year, we do this. One week is not enough. Hold the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, pursuant to Ohio Vice Code 21.22G1, I hereby move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of an employee or official of the school district. At the end of that executive session, our only motion will be to adjourn the meeting. Well, you said I moved, that's why I said. Okay, all right. Hold the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Thank you all for being here.